We're all the same thing. And then if our process changes in the future, that can be a whole discussion, but right now, that's nothing.
Because if we don't agree, then it doesn't get to everybody else.
Correct.
We have to be concurrents before it goes to everybody else. That's my understanding of it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Video poll meeting. It is Thursday, September 4th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. at roll call please.
Mr. Bimmons?
Here.
Mr. Bobby?
Here.
Mr. Craddy? Mr. Fekety?
Here.
Mrs. Myrino?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Please rise.
My life's a real easy ride of the United States of America. And you really publish for which you can, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We are so excited to have Booth back at our board meetings. So these are our September Huntley High five winners. I'm going to have each one of them come up and introduce themselves to you.
My name is Isabel. I'm in second grade and my school is Texas.
All right, now Isabel, you get to start us off. So after each person introduces themselves, I'm going to read what was nominated about you for your award. I know sometimes it's really hard to hear really good things about you. It's okay. We want to celebrate. So your nominator was Mrs. Francato. Isabel is an amazing student. She is such a kind friend and has gone out of her way to make one of our new ESL students feel welcome in our classroom. Isabel always takes time to make her feel included and help her with directions and routines. Isabel is an outstanding student and is always there to help others. I am so happy to have her in my class. High five, Isabel. Another new piece that we're adding to this as we're going to tie it. So I'm going to, when we talk about our portrait of a learner from our new strategic plan, we were not only looking for some of those character traits, but looking at what trait falls in with our portrait. And so that would be an engaged and responsible citizen.
My name is Michael. I go to Conley and I'm in third grade.
And Michael, Mr. Byrne had this to say about you. In the first few weeks of third grade, Michael has stood out as a model student. He embodies what it means to be a true skilled communicator. Michael does not shy away from sharing his ideas with classmates and makes activity listens and provides feedback in a way that pushes conversations and thinking forward in our classrooms. An adherence with two ears, one mouth ratio. That must be something you do in class? Maybe? Michael listens twice as much as he speaks and is always careful to share his ideas concisely and pointedly. Congratulations, Michael.
My name is Tommy. And I go in kindergarten.
Have a case then. Tommy, could you do us a favor? Could you stand up just to the side so you can hear all these wonderful things? All right. This is what your teacher, Mrs. Scholl, had to say about you. And she tied it to the characteristic of a skilled communicator as well. Tommy came to kindergarten confident, friendly, and ready to learn. His smiles light up our classroom and he is always willing to help me or other friends in our class. He does a great job following classroom expectations and is our permanent line leader, which is a very important job in kindergarten. Other teachers have mentioned to me how friendly and sweet he is. We have students from another classroom join our class for specials and lunch. Tommy turned to one of our students who did not know anyone else in the class and said, "Do you want to be my friend?" The other student smiled and said yes. He's made him feel more comfortable and excited to join our class ever since. I'm so proud of Tommy and feel he deserves recognition for being such a great role model to his peers. Congratulations.
My name is Dwellie and I am in sixth grade and I go to Martin Elementary.
And Dwellie, you do me a favor too. There you go. This is what your teacher had to say about you. And she linked it to the portrait of a learner characteristic empowered learner. And I have to agree. I know you've come to a lot of our reading programs over the last few years. Dwellie is new to Martin and has come in every day with a smile on her face. From the start, she's shown confidence and positivity and comes to school prepared and ready to learn each and every day. She completes her assignments on time and just demonstrates responsibility by asking thoughtful questions and when she needs clarification. She's kind to her classmates, a strong communicator, and is willing to collaborate with others to make learning fun and successful in our classroom. She sets a strong example of what it means to be an empowered learner, not only through her academic dedication, but also through her kindness, her leadership, and the way she supports everyone around her. Congratulations. Congratulations.
My name is Emily and I go to the elementary third grade.
And Emily, here's what your teacher had to say about you. And they tied it to the engaged and responsible citizen. Emily, you're in fifth grade. And Emily consistently models what it means to be a District 158 and a Leggie learner. She shows respect to both her peers and her teachers by listening attentively and treating everyone with kindness. She is responsible for her work, staying organized, and putting forth her best effort each and every day. Emily also makes safe choices in the classroom and around school, helping to create such a positive environment. She is actively involved in class discussions, group work, school activities, contributing ideas and supporting her classmates. And overall, Emily demonstrates the qualities of a respectful, responsible, safe, and involved learner in all areas of the Leggie life. Congratulations, Emily.
Hi, I'm Africa and I go to Martin Middle School.
And Africa, you're in eighth grade, right?
Oh, yeah.
I don't say which teacher, so it's one of your teachers from your team. And tie this to the Portrait of a Learner characteristic, engaged and responsible. An engaged and responsible citizen, Africa exemplifies the Portrait of a Learner by consistently showing empathy, kindness, and integrity in her actions every day. She has gone above and beyond to welcome and support newcomers to our school and in her pod, helping them feel included, valued, and connected to our school community. With respect and understanding, she guides her peers through both academic and social transitions, embracing diverse perspectives, and fostering a culture of true belonging. Through collaboration and compassion, she helps to ensure that our students have the opportunity to thrive, making a lasting positive impact on our whole school community. Congratulations.
My name is Addison Stone. I'm a senior at Humley High School.
All right, and Addison, you have a lot of teachers too. So it doesn't say which one, but maybe we can find that out for you. And they tied it to many different characteristics. Engaged and responsible citizens, skilled communicator, and a future-ready student. Addison thoroughly embodies the Portrait of a Learner as she is a member of the Raider Nation News Team and the HHS Global Academy and strives to make an impact. She wants to be a journalist in the future and is passionate about journalism and completing her Global Scholars Capstone Project, looking at threats to safe journalism overseas. She has shown her critical thinking skills and strong communication through her involvement with Raider Nation News and the Global Academy and is actively engaged in trying to make the world a better place through both of these programs. Addison is well-spoken, kind, and a strong student and classmate and encapsulates the qualities of the Raider Way. She is a leader in the HHS community and we look forward to seeing what she does in the future to truly make the world a better place. Congratulations. I'm trying to figure that out. Can you figure out which teacher? Yes. Based on that, yeah.
My name is Crystal and I'm from a light program.
Crystal, and here is what your teachers had to say about you. And they tied it to an engaged and responsible citizen as well. We are so proud to recognize Crystal with the High Five Award for being an engaged and responsible citizen. She is someone who contributes to their community with empathy, kindness, respect, and integrity. Someone who embraces diverse and different perspectives, collaborates with others, and takes informed action to create a positive change. Crystal demonstrates these qualities through her active participation in the light program, through her volunteer opportunities, and her involvement in numerous community events over the years. In addition, she has shown a commitment to our local community by working at the local bakery for many years. Crystal also takes time to share her love of baking by making cakes and treats for special occasions such as birthdays for both staff and students. Congratulations, Crystal. We're going to have you guys come on up. We have a certificate for you. And as they're doing that, parents, thank you for sharing these wonderful children with us each and every day.
All right, congratulations, everybody. All right, with that, we'll move on to item three, public comment. Do you have any sheet this evening? Are sheets last called? Okay. Revision and adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have anything? All right.
With close session, the only thing we have are minutes, so we could hold that and do those minutes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Everybody's evening, group. So we'll strike item 14 and move to close question minutes for next time.
Mr. Troy?
Yeah.
You could probably take off 11 because I'm going to be leaving. So unless anybody else has anything on there. Whatever it were.
Actually, we did want to hold on to it.
Oh, I see that.
Because we wanted to discuss the positive outlier thing.
No, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I didn't see that earlier when I looked online.
No, we could move it to the beginning if you want.
Yeah, we can shift it out.
Whatever, sure.
We'll do that.
Okay.
All right, and then I have some questions about the minutes for the Board of Education, item 12.3. So I'd like to strike that, push those minutes up for a later date. Anything, anybody else? All right. Not hearing anything else, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the striking of item 14 and the removal of item 12 dot three for the minute. And just moving the agenda, we're going to put anything special for that.
Okay, sure.
All right, that's the end of my motion.
I will second the motion.
Second, Mr. Peckety. What's called, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, not hearing any. She carries two arrows. Item 11. Community relations. Go right ahead.
Yes, hi. So tonight, I wanted to just revisit something that came up at our most recent board meeting that Mr. Troy brought up, and that was about the Positive Outlier Award. If you recall, I think it was in July, we recognized our partnership with Southwest Sun City with the Positive Outlier Award. They've gone above and beyond for the school district and has positively impacted student success. And at times throughout the years, we have issued this Positive Outlier Award. Most of the time it's been for, in recognition of a community partner. So last month, I believe, Mr. Troy asked about the possibility of expanding the Positive Outlier Award to include staff. And so I just thought I would bring this back here to, you know, put before the board, to, you know, for your feedback if this is something that you are interested in doing. And if so, what would that look like? Like criteria is something that really the board would decide what you want that to be. I just wanted to bring it back here so that based on interest.
When we talk criteria, we're thinking similar to when we have, we have the student recognition. High five is one component of it. But when we bring students in for recognition, it's usually for state and national level type activities. If there is an activity that doesn't have an IESA or IHSA event to that, there have been some times that that has been also recognized at this level. So in looking at that Positive Outlier, if we expanded that to, because right now we've only given it three times in the census inception. And so if we did want to expand that, what criteria would you like to look at so that it's not just anytime someone nominates someone? But what would, what would that look like? Or do we want to leave it as is with kind of the community partnerships that go over and above?
So to me, this, it was a situation that kind of presented itself, and that's what spurred the conversation.
Mr. Troy?
Yes, go ahead. All right, thank you. This was the conversation we had one-on-one. And that particular individual, the achievement or what they gave back to the community, I thought was really special and worthy of extra recognition. So that's how this idea came about and thought it was a good idea to bring it up to the board on Bart's side, just for some criteria, some direction, so that we can do some presentations as a board in appreciation. Bar above beyond. And that's why it was brought here. Question is approved.
Do you have any recommendations, Ms. Bar, of what that criteria could look like or thoughts?
There are different ways that it could, there are many different ways it could be done. I did work on a program in my previous district. I think also one thing that's been done here was something that was done with ATA and HESPA, right? Where they had a recognition process and then would bring forth staff to be recognized through how they did theirs. Ms. Lambert, am I missing anything else?
No, that's how the staff recognition had been done before. We could also look at it too if we have had staff maybe who have received recognition or involvement on, you know, large-scale components. We had a staff member who had, this summer, it was a high school staff member who had been nominated and recommended to spend a couple of weeks with NASA and was able to learn from them and bring back activities that would impact the classroom and the science curriculum. That might be something that would be kind of stand out component of that. If we're looking at, I know a lot of the buildings do things where their, where their colleagues or parents can recognize staff at their building level. So we wouldn't want to take over, you know, from that. That's something that they would do there. If it is something that we, you'd want me to have conversation with the union presidents at both HESPA and ATA to see if they'd be, you know, wanting to bring that program back. That again was something that they did, it was not required by us. But it's been a number of years, I'd say, from that. So again, kind of looking at that, we have fantastic things that our staff do each and every day. And so it would be the component of how do you recognize all of those and not want to forget? So that's why we're kind of looking at what would that criteria be for something? Do I have any, you know, missing someone if we brought it to this level?
And if I thought through this, to me, it wasn't necessarily that it was criteria driven. It was just one of those, when you see it, you know it, right? And that's how I felt about this particular situation. It was above and beyond, it was a district-wide experience or gesture. And I thought that that was worthy of kind of special recognition. So how do we get there? I, you know, with criteria and such, I think it becomes a little more challenging. One of those instances that, what spurred the idea? Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I have a quick question. When, sometimes there is various media outlets, radio stations, that are like asking students to nominate their teachers. Do we, as the district, do we get notified when one of our staff members has been nominated by one of our students? Do they, do they let us know so that we can piggyback on that? Or, you know, we already have kind of a process where staff are recognizing each other, right? And that's through the, at foundation and they're celebrated and it's an awesome event. I love it, I love, you know, watching staff get together. But if it's coming from students really nominating someone and saying this person helped or? We have been notified in the past where we've known because oftentimes they'll bring, you know, a bun cake and all the things and give a recognition at the school, or it might be an interview. I can't say we've been notified of that every time because there may be one we just haven't been aware of. But typically, we would know if they were, not if they were nominated, but if they won that award, we would be.
I was just saying, yeah, Star Bonafides in the past does do a pretty good job of reaching out, especially if I have relationships there. So if they know there's somebody there, they will reach out and they'll coordinate the publicity around that. I can't, I know some of the other radio stations do it too.
Yes, and not just the winners, but even, I mean, it's just nice to even recognize that, okay, even if they weren't the winner, we're still recognizing that one of our students took the time to nominate someone, you know, on their behalf for that and felt they were worthy of that. We get a little bit of more awareness of that so that it's more student-driven. We can look into that. And again, different buildings do things where they would have parents and students nominate. Some of them have kind of an open link, if you will, where they can send things in. I know, without spoiling it for, just talking with one of the principals, it's something that they're going to look to do at the end of this semester with students recognizing staff members and thanking them. So I know those things happen at a building level. And so, you know, maybe do we want to see that continue to grow organically there and then bring it back later? Yeah, bring it outside the school, even if it is celebrated. They're like, give it some recognition here at the, at the meeting so that, because we wouldn't know if it's happening in an individual school. It would be nice to know that the students or parents are acknowledging staff members.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I like the idea of celebrating staff that are, you know, especially those that are being recognized at like a state or national level or participating in some of these programs. I like the idea. Wonder what the mechanism is for kind of gathering those things and what does that look like? But I'd like to see this move forward.
Oh, good.
I don't know if that helps or not, but.
Well, it did, and there's so many different ways to do it. I think building off of things that are already in place might be a great first step. And that would be working with the buildings to see what they're currently doing and perhaps bringing those people forward. And then maybe consulting with the unions and seeing what they, if they want to be involved. And then looking at the state and nationally. they, if they want to be involved and, and then looking at the state and nationally, if I think, maybe those three would be my recommendation at this point. Can I bring it back?
Or is the committee chair, so?
Yeah. Yeah, sounds good. Thanks, Ms. Barr.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on the committee?
Uh-uh.
Good time?
Yeah, good time, yeah. I could stay for a little bit longer.
All right. Anything else, Ms.?
No, thank you.
Item five, curriculum instruction committee, Mr. Pecati, just turn it over to you.
Yeah, so curriculum and instruction committee has two updates tonight related to future graduations and MCC, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McCrystal.
All right, the first item on there, Ms. Lombard's going to change.
I'll say it. Nobody should put in their here or finance, it kind of went for both places. As you know, this is the final year of our contract with NIU. We were previously in a three, was extended to a five year agreement to host our high school graduation there and looking at a venue that could hold the size for our students and families. Variety of different places were looked at. When I say a variety, it's a very small number because looking at the size that we would need, there are only a few places that are out there. Another site that is similar to the NIU convocation center that was, has been looked at is, I always call it, it's all named, is the Now Arena, right? And I believe a couple of years ago, when we looked at that, the price was around, Dr. Bealan, I threw it out to you, about $30,000. And so that price would probably have increased. The contract that we brought before you, again, is with NIU. Our time for graduation has inched up a little bit. It is still not the greatest time, it is not 7:30, it would be a 6:30 start time. There has been an increase in fees. Some of the fee increase, part of that is just as things move forward, right? The cost for all of their printing and their staffing and all of that is an increase. But the large number, the main reason for the large number of increases from last year or this year to next year is because of staffing for more security components there. Being such a large arena with that many individuals, that was a component that their staff felt very, was very important. It was something that they've talked to with all of the schools that do rent that area. Dr. Bealan, those are the two main reasons for the increase, correct, in price? So in looking at that, we did feel that this was the best recommendation to bring forward to continue on for the next three years at NIU. If there were places that were a little closer, either around that same cost or a little bit cheaper, that would be nice, but those are things that have not been able to be looked at in the past. I know you and your team have really, over the years, looked for that. Dr. Bealan, anything you want to add?
Good evening. I did have a phone conversation with NIU, they have a choice over administration, and we talked through a little bit more of the contract today, just some of the questions that were coming forward. And this is not just for Huntley High School, right? Like this is for all of the schools. They do three graduations Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the entire month of May and cover a number of high schools. So we are still one of their largest. We have really gotten our set of times and the times that we're there pretty, pretty tight. The team actually from NIU came out towards the end of last year. We really worked to try to negotiate time. There's, it's a school that is there that has two earlier slots. They have two campuses, and so we tried to negotiate to see if we could take earlier and they could rotate between the, the later two slots, just kind of on and off years. No buzz, but they were, they did at least move the time up for us, so that's been a challenge.
Yeah, Dr. Bealan, one of the components in there, and I believe it's around 2,500, I think it's 3,500 for the AV.
Yes.
So they do the streaming, the sound, all of that. I know there was a hiccup with us, the streaming this past year and with the sound. Is that anything that we can continue to work with them on?
Yeah.
What were their thoughts?
So they are, we have worked with them the past few years. They used to outsource to an AV company doing their live stream and so forth, and so we worked with them. And then all we have to do to provide to them at this point is access to our YouTube network for them to be, and we set it all up and it goes through testing and then we, we, we do that in terms of sound, just, we try to get in there early just because the school prior to us does a larger setup, right? There's more, our, their graduation, we're very simple, their graduation is do awards and bands and choirs and all of the different things, so their setup is a little bit different. So we will continue to work with them and tweak on their system that they have.
I want to ask a question that, just I know that from times of time we get from parents or the community, I know the answer, but I just throw it out there so we can answer that for people who might not have had a student at the high school. Why don't we do it at the high school?
Back in 2021, we did it on the field when we had social distancing and all of the things, we did three ceremonies to fit everyone out on the field in terms of rental, the stage itself, which actually was a full semi truck, the AV and the audio to maintain that was much more costly than actually doing it in Northern Arena. We were close to about 45, $46,000 just to put three ceremonies on staff all day. And weather. Most schools that do it out on the football field, they, their rain, their rain contingency plan is to move inside. At that point, once we say, hey, we're going to do this on our field, we don't have an inside contingency, so that is really the hang up for us unless we significantly limit tickets, I think one to maybe two.
So you've all had an opportunity to kind of look at the recommendation and the contract that's on there, questions that the board may have. Start with the curriculum committee.
I have a question. Anybody look into Willow Creek again? I know that was on the table a while ago.
If given direction to do so, we could reengage. When we looked at them prior to going back to do this five year renewal, the reason we locked in at the five year was because we got to a point where we were like, it's either the, or the Now Arena or Northern. I know that there were some challenges with looking at Willow Creek. Willow Creek offered us, I believe we were just around 12 grand, and we had the Saturday that we needed and we could do multi-year contracts and so forth. We had the Saturday that we needed and we can do, we had the entire day, right? So we could choose to do an 11 o'clock, a 1 o'clock, a pre, or whatever we wanted to do. And that facility will fit us, it does see 10,000 people. We don't need 10,000 at this point. We're even getting smaller, you can noticeably see it at NIU, but not small enough to fit into any other facility. So if given direction, you know, to, to look at that, we could reach back out to see.
I mean, because I'm sure, I mean, I know there's sound system. I mean, the last three I have attended, I, I have no idea what anybody says, because I can, it is so hard. I know we're on stage, but I'm like, yeah, terrible.
It is an arena with no.
Twenty thousand dollar fee, I mean, by the time you figure out everything, it's like, and I don't even know what half these kids are saying, I'm like, makes me so sad. Because I sit there, I'm like, I, I, yeah, it's such an act, oh, it's terrible.
And to get used to like listening to and hearing, it is, yes, it for sure is different.
Not that nobody's aware of that, but, yeah.
Well, I mean, to be clear, I've been to five graduations, one of which was on the high school field here, and NIU is, it's awful to get to, right? You've got an hour and a half commute at least to get there. The time we have it basically screws anybody from doing it af, anything after, other than causing trouble. You can potentially do something early, but you've got to get there so early with that. The, and the, and the sound is just, it's terrible. I mean, I, you, you, we can kind of hear your speeches, I know they're better than what they sound like because I've heard you speak before, but it's, it's awful there. I mean, I, I just, I would like the district to think hard about where we could do this. And I had, my favorite of the five was actually the one at the high school. It felt good to be at the place where they were, and I understand some of those, the concerns about the weather and things like that. The cost perspective, right? This was rushed in COVID, you were renting things, everybody was charging more because it was COVID, and you had to set up the spacing of it for social distancing, which is likely to be an issue anymore. So I think I would ask the district to look at Willow Creek and the high school and if there are any other options.
Is there a timeline that this has to be locked in by, like a window or?
Well, we're separate here, but we probably would need to, here probably within the next few months, make a decision if we would be going with them or not to sign that contract. I don't, did they give you a?
No, I just, I kind of gave them the timeline, just that we, that this contract would be at least going forward. And if there were any follow-up, they, I told them I would follow up with them as well if there were any follow-up questions from you all that we did not have the answer to. So, so no.
Other thoughts on looking at?
Boy, is that enough time to research those other two options?
Yeah, it really is. At this point, really, it is a phone call. I mean, like I said, the Now Arena, there, I'm going to be honest, there's not much. We, we even looked at them for prom venue when our contract changed for the Hyatt Unexpected League last year, and it was, it was very expensive even for just that event. So because they're in Cook County, there's a lot of taxes, a lot of fees and things they actually have to pay just for having an event that large, which is why a lot don't do it there. The cost for what we would need it for was the same cost that 300 would pay for all three of their schools to do their graduations there, and they do it there, but it makes sense for all three of their schools, so this one's set up one day.
What we could do is we could look at each of the venues that we've talked about here tonight and bring back a comparison with the pros and cons for each one of those, like its four locations, right, that we could look at and have that discussion at each four minutes, we could do that very quickly.
I can do it very quickly, yeah.
Getting those, we'll, we'll look at availability, price, all of those things, and then discuss what are the pros and cons from distance to size, just everything, and then have that discussion rather than one item at a time, to bring back all four. Because I, I'm not thinking of, okay, but if there is another one that pops up at us, we could, you know, bring that one forward too, but we could absolutely put something together pretty quick for all four of them.
And I, I'm sure you've looked into this, like MCC as a venue or, no? Okay.
No, we, we got to experience dual degree, just a spot, and there, it's between their gym and their auditorium, which is, are the two largest spaces and.
The number of people who'd be able to attend would, if we could have something virtual for people to watch, that, that, you know, that's not welcoming. But that will be, you know, that could be out there, and that's, that would be a con when we put up those pros and cons out there.
I like your idea, Ms. Lombard, I guess the question is, doing that and getting some sort of assurance about the sound quality at NIU? That, that seems to be amazing to you.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how much more they would be able to.
Sure.
To say like, hey, we can do this. Like I said, that, their whole setup is there for the entire month, and there's not much other than it being in an arena, you know, that they would be able to do.
Well, go ahead, Ms. Barr. No, that's just for Ms. Lombard, sorry. No, 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 you're all good, you're all good. You're all good, Dr. Bealan.
For now.
For now. So Ms. Lombard, kind of, we had had just a brief conversation about the previous contract. Mr. Troy and I were on the board in 2022 when we went ahead and approved the three year for '22, '23, and '24. And at that meeting in January, there was some discussion, we locked it in for a three and we kind of had that like out there for an extra couple of years, but technically '25 and '26 were never approved by the board. The contract was signed, it was changed, but the board didn't, and so it was additional for the two years. So is the right thing, I think I'm just trying to make the, the contract right, is the right thing to do even though we'll probably pay '25? So we need to finalize that contract adjustment through '26. We're just trying to make right. I don't know if that needs to be done or not because we had that conversation in January, which is kind of out there. So.
One of the things we did look at was the threshold of contract that would have to come forward to the board, and it is under that. However, I mean, I do understand where you're, you're looking at, are we bound by it because it's been signed? We are, we'd have to go forward on that. The other piece is that you would be approving the, the payment come May or June when we cut that check, so there would be an approval for the actual expense, but open the discussion of what other board members think.
I pushed my button, mostly because if underneath the threshold, then we give the administration the option of doing that. That's why the threshold is in place so that these types of things for smaller expenses don't get hung up and, and coming through here and et cetera. I, I understand the question and hearing it for the first time where you're coming from on it, but, you know, just generally speaking, that's why they have that threshold in place.
What is, what is the threshold?
Well, all of it now, if we had like looked at that five year contract in totality, it would have been over that threshold now, but since we're only looking at this final year, it is under that. Lombard, it's, it's been moved up to, it was 10, it went up to 25, is it now 25 or 35?
I'm sorry, I missed.
The threshold for contracts that must come forward.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I just wanted to make sure that we're just kind of any loose ends, because when I was looking for, because when I saw 27, 28, and 29, I'm like, when did we do 24, or 25, and 26? It's just kind of like, and, and I, and I saw what we had done, and I just wanted to put it out there, and if we're, for, within our threshold, we're, we're all good. Everybody else? Okay, I can go.
Now back to Dr. McCrystal for number two.
Yeah, this evening, we have a data sharing and use agreement between the McKinney County College and Huntley Community School District 158 before you. And we have been in an agreement with them once we began our dual credit courses and that partnership with them. And what they have done is they have worked with all of the different districts throughout the county to clean up their agreement, bring it up to par with current legis, with current regulatory, statutory requirements, make sure that we are covering all parts of the law. So there are two parts to this agreement that, one of them that is continued, which is just our dual credit data sharing, which is information for students who choose to enroll in dual credit classes, that we are saying we will provide information for those students to McKinney County College, and they will also provide information back to us on how they are doing. And so that is for students who choose to be in dual credit classes, we've always had that. And the language within this updated agreement just cleans up the statutory requirements that have been updated over the last couple of years around data usage, sharing, et cetera. So that has been continued. There's a second part that is new in this agreement that we have not had with McKinney County College, and it's regarding post-secondary outcomes. So what we are recommending is that we do go ahead and agree to partner with MCC on this because we will be able to, they will be able to gather information from our seniors who graduate on what their post-secondary path might be, and they'll be able to provide that information back to us. And when they provide that information back to us, we'll be able to help monitor our college and career readiness as well as some of their preparation to go based off of if it's college, if it's, if they're going to enlist, all the different parts of that. And we've not been able to collect that data. As a part of our strategic plan, one of our categories is that future readiness, one of our pillars, and I know that's part of the conversation, we built that plan over the last year, but that we want to be able to engage with our students, and we don't really have a good way to get that information back. And so what this partnership will allow us to do is for students who do not opt out, we will have an opt-out option. MCC will be able to gather that information through the National Clearing House, which is a national organization out there that tracks where students might be going, and then they will be able to, be able to see where our students are doing with their path as well as we'll give that information. as well as we'll give that information back internally. And so you will see that two-way data sharing has been updated. We are also, I'm trying to think, there's one other part I wanted to highlight in here. We would be starting that with the current seniors, so we've given the option to opt out. And then on July 1st of every year, they have to wipe clean all the data that we have sent to them. And then we would reshare the current seniors and then the next year of seniors. They want to be able to track up to five years. We wouldn't begin that until this year, so it'll take five years for them to collect any of that data. And July 1st every year, they wipe clean and we have to reshare that information. And so that's what this agreement really is updating, it's those two parts. The one is just renewing what we've been doing, and then the second part is that post-secondary outcome.
Dr. McCrystal, an original component of this was something where they could then send outreach. We figured we would not send information to them for mailings and whatnot, but that we could share information through our newsletters. Was, there was a change because there was that opt-out that would have had for our freshman, sophomore, and senior. But since that component has been removed, it is only the seniors then?
Yes, I'm glad you brought it up. So there was a third option that we did ask them to remove from our agreement between us with McKinney County College, which was for them to be able to gather directory information on our students from eighth grade all the way up to seniors, that they can market to our families. The purpose is for them to know exactly what's going on with, you know, so that they could get stuff to families about MCC, basically. And so we said, we want to be great partners, we believe we want to keep that partnership going, but we have other averages that we can share our information with. We don't want to share all of our student instructor information from eighth grade up until seniors. So we did ask them to remove that, they complied, and we were able to remove this amended agreement.
The opt-out you said is for seniors. If you're going into the dual degree into your junior year, would they then sign into the opt-out? Would they have to opt in or opt out?
Good question. So if you're doing the dual degree, it is required to be a part of that, so you can't opt out. We can't do the program because we have to be able to share.
Because you're pretty much not any MCC students, so they have the option.
Yeah, so just the senior in that you opt out would have the option to opt out of sharing their information. The families could opt out for their students. But if you are in our dual program, in dual credit or dual degree, the assumption is you are enrolled in both universities. So we're going to be helpful both ways. And we've never had the two-way data sharing, so that's the things I'm really excited to see in this. It's been very one-way, we've shared our information, we don't get much back from them. And now they're trying really hard to allow us to see how our students are doing in the classes. And so some of this helps allow us to understand where our students here at Huntley are getting classes as well. I do have both agreements in there. The current one is Appendix B, and then the revised one is Appendix A. And so I'd be asking the curriculum committee to move this forward for approval at next board meeting.
Any additional questions? All right, we will move this forward to the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Mr. Bobby with the Special Education Committee.
All right, Special Education Committee, item six, Ms. Gill.
Before you, I have a memo that provides an overview of our special education services in the district. The memo itself provides three things. One, some legal context for why we provide special education services as a public school. The second is a review of our district's continuum of service. And the third thing is a review of the data specific to Huntley. When putting the memo together, I thought through why we might want to talk about this tonight. There's been some great work that we've done over the last few years for sure around alignment of our special education programming, aligning our curriculum instruction, making sure we have some really targeted and appropriate professional learning for our staff, making sure that we're improving our instructional practices and maximizing our students' access to general education curriculum and the best practices available for them to access. We have really spent a lot of time digging through our data to make sure we're looking at our special population so that we are understanding the trends in special education, so that we're understanding what it looks like in our district, and that we're being responsive to what our teachers are telling us they need, our families are telling us they need, and ultimately what our students are telling us they need in the data that we're reviewing. So we're really, really, very, very excited about the work we're doing. There's just been such an incredible overhaul of so many of the spaces that we touch. And Dr. McCrystal and I have, have really spent a lot of time over the last two years collectively making sure that every student that is supported in our school district is, is really being supported in the best possible way. So it's really exciting work, and I think it's a good time for us to just review some of those contexts so we understand what it looks like here in Huntley. And, and we also want to highlight some of the things that have come out of that. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna kind of give an overview from the, you know, the memo itself. And then in front of you, you each have one-page visual of our self-contained program, because it's been some heavy lifting and some great work we've done. And I'll overview that a little bit as well. Try to be brief, but this is my favorite topic in the whole world. So brevity is, is not always my strength.
Does the, are we able to share this on the screen too for the community? I don't know if that.
Oh, for the, the one-pager?
Yeah.
Sure, I can have Ms. Dr. McCrystal. Please hold. All right. No pressure to be stressed about this, right? No pressure on me at all.
We just want to show off your work.
Well, the flyer itself should be credited to our communications department. So I can't take any credit for that. Denise and Kimmy have done an incredible job of making sure we're visualizing it. And this is obviously the beginning of what we plan to do, so.
And well, Mrs. Gill's pulling that up, I can let you know that there's more detailed information on the website under special services that really does, it has bullet points to expand upon what each of the differences are within the four programs for self-contained when we look at the whole continuum. And so this is kind of encapsulating that in kind of something that can be handed out and discussed at IEP meetings and all of those things. Trying to give you a little time.
That was helpful. Back to, no. And it is, our website does, does include this, but this is kind of a nice way to bring it visually together. So before we do talk about the self-contained program descriptions in front of you though, I do want to provide the overview of special education from the context of, our legal context in our Huntley specific context. Because our self-contained programs are wonderful, and this work is wonderful, and the flyer is wonderful, everything's wonderful. But, but so much of the work we do is, is more than our self-contained programs. And so I think that's really important to highlight, because as we start to enter into a lot of conversations around curriculum, around data, around moving kids off the mark, performance and growth, it's really important that we're considering the needs of our students with IEPs. And of course, we're considering our students who are engaging in our self-contained programs. But we have a lot of students with IEPs that aren't engaging in our self-contained programs because they are in, you know, in the general education setting for the majority of their day. So I want to just review that if I can, and then I promise we'll look at the, at the program description. There? Okay.
Okay.
Turn me off my game.
Thank you.
All right. So I wanted to share it first by saying, actually, the first time I ever heard about special education rights was my first year in college. I learned that the individuals, at that time, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act originated in 1975. At the time I learned it, it was Public Law 94142, it was ingrained in my head. And that's, that's really where protections for individuals with disabilities in public schools originated. In, at that time, it guaranteed individuals with disabilities access to public school. We were required as public schools to provide free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So if you hear anyone talk about special education, those are two of the most familiar key terms. We call it free, faith, and all ready. So free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. In 1990, that law expanded to include the provision of transition services, which you know are near and dear to all of our hearts. And it expanded our eligibility categories to include autism. Reauthorized again in 1997, and then again in 2004, the law expanded again to further ensure that we are providing our students access to the general education environment and also access to their grade level standards. And it really emphasized the access to evidence-based practices and ensuring that we as school districts had more accountability to what we were doing to support our students with special education needs. So that's great news for me, because I love this work, and I think here in Huntley, we have a lot to be proud of. Within the, so the federal law guides what we have to do federally. But in the context of Illinois, we provide special education services to eligible students ages three through the school year in which a student turns 22. And we have 14 eligibility categories. So the eligibility categories in special education just tell us what a student may need in order to, to be successful as it relates to their disability category. And in Illinois, we measure access to the general education setting by looking at the percentage of time a student spends in the general education setting. So we very specifically in Illinois say that we measure it by students who spend 80% or more of their day in the general education setting, students who spend 40 to 79% of their day in the general education setting, students who spend less than 40% of their day in special education, and students who spend 100% of their day in special education. Kind of broadly, those are four of the categories that we look at in the state of Illinois. So in order to provide special education services that are individualized and allow for us to be free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, we have to provide a continuum of service. And so that continuum of service means that we have to provide special education services within the general education setting and outside of that general education setting. And the percentage of time we do that is dependent on what a student might need. And so in Huntley, we have services that are provided inside the general education setting. So you'll see special education teachers and general education teachers working together. You'll see general education teachers supporting students and having related service providers inside their classrooms, or students being pulled out of their classrooms. So we provide general support within the general education environment. We provide resource support, which is often, we call it pull-out support, where we pull students out of that general education setting for a part of their day to provide them with their special education service. And then because we have students with some pretty extensive needs sometimes, we have self-contained or specialized programs. Typically, students who are pulled out into our self-contained or specialized programs, typically, they're spending less than 40% of their day in the general education setting, although that's not always true. But that is, that is typically. The last two years, we've spent a lot of time aligning our self-contained programs to make sure that all of them provide certain things. Let me back, what's not on here is, but it is on our website. So all of our self-contained programs provide rigorous curriculum and they target grade level standards. All of them have multi-country tools available, structured teaching approaches, specially-designed instruction, specially-designed learning environments, meaningful experiences in the general education and special education settings, reduced staff-to-student ratio, small group instruction, opportunities for whole-group instruction, in-person center support, options for flexible scheduling, paraprofessional support, intensified, targeted, and specialized support, and opportunities for community-based instruction. So it's important to know that no matter which self-contained program a student is engaged in, they are all receiving those things. And then each of our self-contained programs has some specialized areas of focus. We have a primary and a secondary area of focus so that we can really individualize the support a student might need. So the four self-contained programs we have in our district, we have our special needs autism program, just called SNAP. We have our Strategy S program. We have our structured education setting, our FBS program, and we have our instructional program. You'll notice on this description and on our website, each of them has a primary focus and a secondary focus. But that doesn't mean that we are focusing on all of the other academic areas, social, emotional, learning areas, because we are supporting the whole child. But it is also important for us to just really make sure that we are responding to an individual student's needs.
Amy, if I could just interrupt one second?
Yeah.
I think we may have a little flip-flopping to do here. In these past two descriptions, you'll see they're identical. So I think we, we might be making a change there.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
But the web, yes?
The website, correct.
So actually, that's really what we should do. Can you go to the website?
Yeah, that's it. We only have like six people look at it. We haven't rented a whole bunch. They're still working. Thanks. So we do talk about our entire continuum of service. And so within, if you keep going down, our self-contained programs, keep going. Okay. Keep going down. Perfect. So each self-contained program is described in detail here. So you can navigate from SNAP, Strategy S, and our instructional program. We'll update the flyers. So when I, when we think about Huntley specifically and the students we're servicing, what I want to highlight is that, so we report our numbers to the state every December, December 1st. It's called the December 1st Child Count. When we have to say to the state on December 1st, this is the number of students we had in our district with IEPs. And this is the way in which we're servicing them. They're in the general setting for this percentage of time, or they're outside of the general education setting for this percentage of time. Last year, we reported 1,161 students with IEPs in our district. That's 13.6% of students in our district. The state average is 16% of students in, in the state have IEPs. But importantly, 60% of our students, of 633 of them, participate in the general education setting for 80% or more of their day. 21% of our students, the 217 additional students, participate in the general education setting for 40 to 79% of their day. So the majority of our students are in fact participating in the general education curriculum. They're measured on the same identical standards as their non-disabled peers. And that's important as we start to look at our IAR data, our AVT data, because 99% of our students with IEPs are on those same measures. So it's really important that they have access to the general education curriculum, the general education standards, because that's what they're being measured against. And so we've been working very hard to make sure that all of our decisions regarding curriculum, instruction, professional learning practices, everything that we're doing is tied to the data that are, that we have in front of us. And so I think that context is really important. And of course, I want to highlight this great work that we've done in our self-contained programs, because it is really incredible work. But I don't want to lose sight either of the landscape we have in our district, which is something to be very, very proud of. Lastly, I'll just highlight that we do an excellent job in our district of supporting our most complex learners. I think I've said it probably 100 times, you guys may get sick of hearing me say it. But we support our, our most complex learners. 3.4% of our students receive services outside of our, our own district. Are comparatively to our surrounding districts, we're the lowest district with that number, which means that we are supporting the majority of our students here in our district programs. It speaks to the great work of our, of our teachers and paraprofessionals who are supporting our self-contained programs and our students with, with IEPs. And I just, I just want to highlight that because compared to the state average, we are, we are doing really, really well, so. Yeah, generally what I wanted to share with you all. And I'm not sure if you have any questions that I can answer, but I definitely wanted to make sure that you guys are hearing all of the things we're doing and giving a good picture of what it looks like here in Huntley.
I think one of the things too, we wanted with an overview at the beginning of the year here, that as we talk about curriculum, when we're looking at literacy, math, any of the wellouts of our adoption process, we'll make sure that we are then also talking about that co-teaching as well. It sounds.
Oh, we can hear it.
Sorry. As well as what that looks like in our self-contained programs. And so whether it's through our KPIs or just the work that we're doing as we're bringing forward, we'll make sure that we will be touching on these things and how our students are having access to that grade level standard. So this is kind of an overview and we'll embed that as we go through the year, highlighting a lot of the great work that's been happening.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gill. First ask, are there any questions from the committee? Any questions in the board?
I had a question about self-contained programs. You said a lot of percentages, but I didn't hear this one. And if you don't have it at the moment, it's okay.
15%.
It's 15%?
Yep.
Okay.
I can, yes, 15% of our students in our district spend less than 40% of their time in the general education setting. I'm going to give you an actual number too. 14.52, but yeah, 14%. So spend, oh, you know what I was going to do though. 151 students spend less than 40% of their day in the general education setting. And 3.6% of our students, I think it's 3.6. 3.4% are in a separate facility compared to the state at 6.7, which equates to 38 students. So 38 of our students are supported in our either private or a public therapeutic based school. Oh, yes, of the students with IEPs.
Right, that's where I got lost. Right, it was the number of the subgroup of students. Understood. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other questions from Ms. Gill? Well, thank you, Ms. Gill. I just have a comment. I think it was a very thorough summary and really an educational piece, as you were just saying to Ms. Lombard, of how there is truly a full continuum of services within our district. And specifically, I think the notable statistic that I think at least popped up for me was Ms. Gill, when you shared about 60% of those who have IEPs are in the classroom 80% of the time or more. When we talk about special education services, although the self-contained classrooms are extremely important, valuable, and a needed resource, I just want us to not lose sight, let's not forget about the other, 60% of students are receiving services that are taking the same exact assessment as their peers who may not require an IEP. So I think that was relevant. And then the only other, the question I had is more a technical question. I know we go up to the age of 22. And I'm assuming, I know the answer to this, but I just want to verify that this is the case. If there was a new law put in place in Illinois specifically that if a student turns 22 while they're already enrolled in the school year, they can finish out the school year.
Correct.
We honor that.
We do honor that here and it's unique to Illinois. Not every state honors that.
Okay, thank you.
It used to be, it used to be that the day you turn 22, you exited services and it was really disruptive. You had students, they have birthdays all year and those students were exiting.
And not be able to join their peers for the school year.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gill. Really appreciate it. The next item, I'll pass it to the finance committee. I know Mr. Craddy's not here, so Mr. Troy or Mr. Bittman want to take the.
Do you want to run this?
Oh, yeah.
And Mr. Craddy, that's item 7.1, monthly fiscal update. Mr. Lombard?
Thank you very much. Only a few things to note the year-end audit. We talked about that last month, went very smoothly. We're still waiting for our auditors to wrap up the reports. We were in discussion with them last week, so we're expecting that within the week or so. So stay tuned on the year-end audit report. From there, once we get that, we will book the entries that they have provided us. We'll pull together the management discussion and analysis, finalize that report, tick and tie essentially every single number on that report, and then bring it back to the board more than likely in late October or November, depending upon the auditor's turnaround and availability. So stay tuned on that. The FY '26 budget, we've got a little work to do. So over the last couple of weeks, we've been doing just that. We've met with several of our departments and we're finding, well, budget cuts, but opportunities so that we can present a balanced budget or a little bit more than a balanced budget in two weeks. So stay tuned on that. But could want to give you an update that we will get there and we will outline all the things that we did to get there when we meet at the budget hearing. Other than that, that is it for the monthly fiscal update. I do have one shameless plug. You know, we do have a really great relationship with the Huntley Education Foundation and they have a really big event this weekend. And I know something about that event. It's a Huntley hootenanny. And they have a country theme this year. And so I just want to make sure that if you're a board member, that you dress appropriately. To me, get the lights. I'm just kidding. Don't get the lights. But it's going to be a great event this year. So come on out on Saturday. Support the Huntley Education Foundation. For anybody listening, anybody in the audience that has never been, I encourage you to come on out and enjoy the festivities on the square. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the fiscal update.
All right, any questions? Nothing from the committee, anything from the board?
All right, so the only question that I had is, so I've been looking at the fund balance report. One of the pieces that I've been looking at, and I know I'm not asking for an answer to these individual things. One of the pieces that I've been looking at is the consistency between Marlowe and Heinemann. And we've had some conversations around that and around new administration at both buildings and trying to have consistent student experiences. And so one of the things I'm noticing is some of the activities are not aligning. Right, so I see Marlowe had, I want to use the number here. Marlowe had $6,000 in expenses for their band program. Heinemann had, I had the number here, much less, right? $100 or something. So I just want to bring attention to that, kind of note that, and ensure that we're having, I guess, consistent experiences for students, depending on, or it's not dependent on the building that they're attending. So for example, looks like Marlowe Track had a large expense that is at least noted on this report. So maybe did all those students potentially get new uniforms this year? And Heinemann did not, right? So just looking at some of the, some of those fund balances and some of that expenses. And maybe that's a question for administration, just seeing, they're not huge dollar amounts, but there is some inconsistencies between the two buildings.
Right, go ahead, Ms. Lombard.
Well, I don't know if that's, this is, I'm going to be a comment you'll make, so you'll go with yours in just a moment. But in a little bit, we're going to get to some of our KPIs, our short-term goals for this year. And one of those talks about exactly that. Transparency and internal consistency with budget allocation and resources. So hopefully, some of this will come through that project. But, Mr. Lombard, do you want to jump in and you might have some.
Yeah, I want to, if you're referring to Mr. Fekety, and I'm sure you are, referring to the activity fund balance report. And so I do want to make sure that the board understands that these are activity funds. And so these are funds raised by students for students. So the majority of the revenue is coming in for these various clubs, these various programs, whether it's at Heinemann or Marlowe, from a consistency standpoint. You know, it may just be the timing of a fundraiser. It may be the timing of, you know, what they decide as a team to do as a fundraiser and how many funds are raised and what are they going to use those funds for? Is it new jerseys? Is it new spirit wear? Is it, you know, maybe it's new soccer balls? Maybe it's new something, right? And so each program kind of runs independently. What I would also add is I have been a facilitator of the extracurricular committee and that is a union, part of the union contract that we have with the APA. And as facilitator of the extracurricular committee, we have these discussions all the time. There are things, there are clubs that may be at Marlowe and may not be at Heinemann. And it's not because we don't want them at both, but sometimes it's an activity or a program may take off at one school and they try it at the other school and they just don't have the numbers. They don't have the interest, so to speak. Obviously, on the athletic side, you know, they're very consistent. But in terms of spend, because they're two different programs, they might be spending those dollars a little differently. Again, I think the key is, you know, revenues raised by students for students and the program. And so they have different needs at those two schools.
And then I think there are some things that we can look at when you're talking about our fine arts department. If you're looking at band, choir, orchestra, those kinds of things, we should be providing the same type of experiences for that. That might be a little bit different about why one may have a Lego club and one doesn't because again, those are what students are going ahead and bringing forward. However, you're looking more at the consistent activities that we provide all, you know, both of our middle schools there. So absolutely, we can definitely continue those conversations to make sure that they are providing the same experiences or one isn't doing without, well, somebody else has all of these extra items.
That's also helpful context to understand that where this fund is coming from. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Just to jump in, I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. The activity fee or athletic fee would be divided pretty much the same way whether you were at Marlowe or at Heinemann. If you joined band, the fee that you'd pay, you'd still get the same amount of money to each student. Is that true?
The athletic fees that are collected at the middle school and/or high school go into the board revenue pool of funds. They don't go to these activity funds, okay? So activity accounting, it's a separate general ledger.
It's a separate account.
Yes, there's a separate account. So whether it's the athletic director at the high school or whether it's the athletic director at the middle school, working with those coaches and those programs, the overall athletic budget of the building, whether it's high school or middle school, is determined by the building as to how those dollars are going to be allocated on an annual basis. So for instance, if you talk to the high school athletic director, she has a, she has an understanding of uniform replacement or supply replacement of things that those sports need over time, right? Because everybody can't get new uniforms the same year. Everybody can't get new equipment the same year. So each athletic director at those buildings work with building principals to determine how to allocate those dollars, just as the principal does within his programs of the building as well.
Okay, and then just the second thing, I think this is what, this is what I took from what Mr. Fekety said, is there's a little bit of inequity between Marlowe and Heinemann because one has 1,200 students and one has 700 students, right? And you're going to have some differences. And that's the way we have structured the middle schools. It's unfortunate because there could be a little bit different at Heinemann.
But what can we do?
To.
Go ahead.
Thank you. To speak to Mr. Bittman's first question about the participation fees. Those participation fees end up in a general fund, not by activity bill.
Correct.
Thank you.
So my question was, when we have these opportunities where, let's say, one, I think last year there might have been robotics. One middle school had robotics club and the other one didn't. What can we do to help, like, okay, we've got a small amount at one school that a number of students that are interested. What can we do to help those students be able to have that opportunity? I mean, we've got two middle schools that we're really trying to run. They have some consistency, some continuity there. Is there anything that can be done that those kids can maybe get to either Heinemann or to Marlowe to participate? Is there any opportunity for allowing that?
Well, if the interest was there, they would fill out. If there's not a club that's going on, there is a form that they would fill out. We have some of our clubs that start out with only a handful of students. So it wouldn't be you have to have this many students for that club to run. So if that interest is there, they would go ahead and they just need a staff member. Doesn't actually have to be a certified staff member. A staff member who is willing to oversee that with them, be there on the night or the nights that that club would go. So we would not say no. They fill that out and it's really to try to get that generated from student voice. And that's why there are some clubs that are a little bit different because there's just not that interest at the other school. We did have some things, golf and bowling. We had had in the past where maybe there was only one student or two students who were interested and we combined those so that we would be able to provide that opportunity and not say, no, sorry, you're going to have to wait. So we will do that.
That was kind of my question. When you've got such a small number and like, maybe like even, you know, I'm fixating on robotics and I don't mean to, but if you're building something, it might be more difficult for two kids at one school to build something as opposed to a team at the other school and how to allow them to participate as well and have that opportunity. My second question is, so some of the funds, the activity fee then comes to the board and then other revenues are at the building level. Then do, does the building level have then their own checking accounts then? How, does some of those, or are they part of the all dispersment?
No, so, well, two things there. Yes, a few different questions. The activity fees, right, we have a separate accounting supervisor who manages all activity accounting, okay? And activity accounting does have its own bank account. Part of the bank account is part of the overall bank account that you see as reported to the board. But those funds are not board funds. Those funds are not like, you do not see the approval of dispersment for these activity funds because these funds are funds that are raised by students, the club, for students, okay? But you don't see those on any of the dispersment reports. That is completely separate. Whereas we are providing this report for informational purposes because these activity funds are outside of the board budget. The board general ledger, if you will, the board operating state. So I hope that helps you understand that.
So when we talk about, like, you've got on here your major cash expenditures, those vendors are not going to show up on the payables that the board approves because they're handled from whoever supervises the activity fund.
Correct.
Am I understanding that?
That is correct.
And then the, so is there a difference in the codes for the funds? Like some are three-digit and some are four-digit or is that just a number?
No, that is just how we're managing those different activity accounts. Once we roll over to Skyward, a lot of these accounts will look very similar to the general ledger accounts that we use today. A very long, a long general ledger account number. But essentially, they're going to be the same, right? It'll still essentially be two separate general ledgers. One, which will be for informational purposes for the board so that you can see what we're doing in terms of activities and clubs, but from not an approval standpoint because that's really not our money. Those funds are raised from the students for the students.
Right, and their sponsor.
Yeah. Yeah, and every school district really is treating it the same way.
No, that makes sense, absolutely. I mean, that is their money. It shouldn't be locked in for us to move around or say, hey, this is a good chunk of money to put here. When they're like, we've raised these funds and/or run this competition, raised these funds for our activities and it should be managed by the students and their activities. and their activity. Absolutely.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I have one additional question. Um, what is the expectation, um, from the district as to when those funds should be spent? Funds raised by students? Like how long can we hold on to those funds?
Yeah, for students. Um, and, and, and there's a lot of questions around this, right? Because at any one point in time where, you know, we are carrying, um, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred to eight hundred thousand, sometimes to one point two million dollars worth of activity funds in all of these different, um, accounts that we have. Um, a lot of them, you know, I would say for one, for the majority of these accounts, you know, a lot of the money that is raised during the year is spent during the year, right? But there are balances that carry over because we have fundraisers that go all year long. And sometimes, uh, sometimes a program, for instance, may have a fundraiser at the end of their season and they're raising money really for next year's team. And it was the previous year's teams that raised money for them. Um, I know the high school is looking, is Mr. Beal in there, I know the high school is looking, um, to work with a lot of their programs because they do have some large programs, whether it's football or soccer or some of the larger athletic programs, but sometimes they're, they're carrying fairly large balances. Um, and so we need to find a better way to make sure that, you know, it is not a two or three year balance that they're carrying. Um, and so we're, we're actually having those discussions primarily at the high school on that. So that's a little background as to why you're seeing some of the balances you're seeing. Sometimes it's just timing of fundraisers and timing is better.
I think based on the question that you're asking, when we think in just a minute, we'll have a few revenue contracts that we have here. They're fundraising and they're talking about specifically having to put what the purpose of that fundraiser is. And if it is to, um, raise money for apparel for that team, then we will need to look and, and go back up. If that was the purpose here, that should be then spent within that year. And so that is something that, um, all of our, whether it's our activity and athletic directors can be more mindful of looking at. If we're approving funds for a specific reason, that those are then, the timeline should be kind of spelled out there, if you will.
Sure.
So I think that's something that we can tighten up a little bit.
Thank you.
To backtrack, something you said, Ms. Lombard, about in the spirit of KPIs and run back to the consistency between Heinemann and Marlo middle tool is if, you mentioned if a student is interested in a topic, then they can complete a form or just ask that, maybe it's already happening this way, is how that information option is presented? Is that presented consistently? So for example, uh, some students don't know what they don't know, and they never even knew there was a Lego club at one school, they may not even bring up Lego club. And, you know, is that presented in a way where, hey, although Lego club might be predominantly at one school, you have the option to join Lego club at the other school?
And I think that, um, that could be for all of our students, but especially at our sixth and our ninth grade levels, they might not know that there's a process. And what can we do to again, be more transparent and, and educating our students on, hey, we have this, if you are interested, these are the times to explore. And we, we want to be able to support those things. And so, um, we can bring that up with our activities directors at both the middle schools and at the high school, um, because again, your sixth and ninth graders probably don't know what they don't know to ask, so.
Right. Thank you.
At the high school, they have that big bulletin, at least they did. I haven't walked by, it's still there, okay. And it gets updated with all of their clubs and activities. It's a pretty large.
Digital.
It's digital now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. See, that's, it's been a while since I've walked past it. Um, but I just remember it, it's pretty out there and it really has all that information of what they, they need and where the...
He doesn't mention any of the, the clubs, like robotics clubs that are available, Marlo that are not middle. Never mentioned. He's known now.
So could, could something be done to, for the middle schools to say, hey, this is here, but not here to indicate that? Like to, to Mr. Bobby's question, they might not have known there's a Lego club at Heinemann and not one at Marlo and because they'd be like, hey, can we get one here?
I think that's something that we can talk to both of our activity directors because they both have, um, their roles, but, um, I can't answer you how often they have conversation around those things, right? And just to educate themselves with what does one school have and what does one school not have? Um, again, it was, it kind of, uh, the conversation forced itself a few years back when we had one golfer who was interested and then the other school was like, well, what if we had someone? Well, of course, then we would combine them together. So, um, we can definitely make sure that those conversations are happening. Um, and then again, it won't be a guarantee that all of them will be, um, the exact same because again, it will be what's driven by the students there. But, um, absolutely, we will, we, we can get better at that conversation about what to offer, how do you go about that, et cetera.
There's also a list in the student email.
I know, but we know that not everybody reads those. Come on.
That's kind of out there.
Yes. But... Yeah, that's another place.
That's a great point. We could even put that in our communication, like, or a list of activities. It's in the handbook. We could put that in our weekly email or in our monthly update site or, you know, for a current list of activities at our school, look at the handbook and that may prompt someone to...
Can I just add that the schools also are pushing that information out in their newsletters?
Okay.
Well, I think that's where my head was going thus far, is if the information is presented inconsistently between the two middle schools, like one sends it out in the newsletter and the other doesn't, and maybe they both do, and that's why the other inquiry is, is does the communication the same to both tools?
And I can't answer that specifically, but certainly something I can look at. So, I'm going to do that.
Thanks for that one.
Anybody else? Um, I did have a question, Mr. Elmeyer. Um, something that Spackety said earlier about the equity question, when building budgets are determined and provided, is that done on a student headcount basis or is that done on a request basis? So if Marlo is asking for a certain amount of items for the year and Heinemann is asking for something different, how, how are those building budgets determined for equity?
They're built on a first student basis.
First student, okay.
First student, not, not if you, if you ask more, you get more.
That's not where I was going, but yeah, because I've seen certain school, different school districts do it on a headcount basis because there's never a consistent number at the same school every year. So, uh, that's, uh, but I've never asked here, so.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions in this area? All right. With that, we'll move, thank you for seven one, seven two, payables. Elmeyer, begin.
Uh, yeah, normally I, I would not add anything here, but we did have a conversation about the dispersment report at the last board meeting and we decided to include the dispersment report tonight. And so I can resummarize, uh, some of what I talked about at the board meeting, um, a few weeks ago. Um, today we have several reports that we bring forth to the board for approval so that we can pay our bills or maybe we've already paid our bills, but we have the board approve. So we have the standard purchase order reports and that would be the purchase order report as well as the supplemental purchase order report. And we also have the accounts payable reports, which is primarily for reimbursements to employees. And then we have the impressed report that you've seen, which is, you know, typically our energy bills or other things that we just need to make payments on. Like we can't wait 30 days or 45 days for board approval. Uh, those are things that just sometimes come through the pipeline that we do have to pay. We make sure we have the proper approvals in place, we make the payment and then we have the board approve it after the fact. And then several, well, boy, before, before I even joined the district 17 plus years ago, uh, we were bringing the dispersment report to the board for approval. Mr. Troy asked me the question, well, how can that keep happening? Um, well, that, we have been doing that for 17 or 18 years because that started, um, before I was hired because, well, I think at the time, we didn't really have a chief financial officer. So the district went a few years without, uh, key personnel in place and the board at the time, well, they wanted to see everything. They wanted to see everything all the time. And so in terms of transparency, we said, well, we'll do this, we'll provide all of these reports. And then at the end of the month, so you can be sure that everything we paid was approved, we will provide you that dispersment report. So for transparency purposes, that's why it happened, right? Now, when you really look at the process today, knowing that you are approving everything and that dispersment report is just another report of everything you've already previously approved, the question is, you know, do we still want to do that? Um, are we okay as bringing that report forward as an informational item? We'll still bring it forward if the board would like us to, um, but it would fall under the fiscal reports, not necessarily an action item to be voted upon because, well, technically all of those items have been voted upon. Um, so I would leave it to the board for discussion so that you can provide us guidance as to how you want us to handle that report. Now, I'm bringing all of this up because in a previous board meeting, right, we were asked to, to see if we can create, um, organically, if you will, um, a report that would run, um, if we ask the system to run it without maybe a single vendor, is that possible? And we are able to do that for the purchase order report, the supplemental purchase order report. But unfortunately, and I'm actually thankful because for internal control purposes, you don't want to run a monthly dispersment report and be able to take somebody out of it, right?
Yeah.
So for internal control purposes, the system yet doesn't allow that. Um, and so I bring that up because it truly is an informational report and it's on topic. Um, so we would like a little guidance from the board as to how you, how you want us to handle that now, knowing all the facts.
Thank you. There's only two people in the committee, so either we get Mr. Krady's opinion on this at the next meeting or we just discuss this now.
I think we can have probably some of the discussion now.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think it's too controversial.
No.
Um, on this, I guess I have a question about the process of dispersments. Some, some places may allow acceptance of an invoice that is higher than a purchase order value by a certain percentage. So one of my concerns would be, I mean, in general, if you had, if we've already approved of the purchase order value and it's $10,000 and we're only paying underneath that, this is not an issue, we had already approved it. But if we allow a 1%, 2%, 5% over that amount, that might be something that we should look at a little bit, either look at the process of should we allow that or?
Yeah, that, that is a really good point because sometimes we do have the board approve a purchase order, but if it, if we do receive the invoice and for instance, there's shipping on that invoice and the shipping wasn't previously on the purchase order, right? Um, we, we are made aware of those things and then we actually internally would go ahead and make that payment, right? Because we have to make that payment. Um, we've had to do the shipment and the board approve the P O from the first place. So to answer your question, that does happen, doesn't happen that often, uh, but on occasion, uh, we do receive invoices that are in excess of the purchase order. Um, it's usually a really big red flag if it's more than 10%, um, but even if it's a, a few percentage points, we, we look at it, um, but we still move forward and make that payment. So that is a really good point.
But I think we'd need, I think we'd want to understand that a little bit because maybe some, some suppliers are always going a little bit above more at Frederick Graff or they're not accounting for tax or something like that.
Yeah, generally, I, I, the vast majority of what we have, um, and I, and I'll explain why, the vast majority, I would say the majority of everything we pay, uh, falls within the purchase order amounts. And why do I say that? Uh, you've seen our supplemental purchase order list, you've seen our purchase order list. For the majority of our vendors, we do a standard purchase order, okay? And when we say a standard purchase order, if we have a, a monthly food invoice from Gordon Food Services, for instance, come in and we know that it could be anywhere from seven to $10,000. When you see that purchase order list, that standard order, purchase order list, you'll see a lot of purchase orders for $7,000, for $10,000, for $15,000. You may see a private facility standard P O for $15,000, right? So we generally are having the board approve way more than what we expect to come through so that doesn't happen. So for the majority of things we pay, we're fine. But on occasion, right, it's little things that come through that we issue a, a separate purchase order for this vendor and maybe it comes through with shipping or something we didn't expect. So questions are asked, we make sure the directors are aware of it and then we go ahead and make payment if we want. Um, it is still up to every single director, um, or ca- and/or cabinet member, um, to sign off on that invoice. So it's not like the invoice comes in and goes straight, uh, to the payable person to pay. We still require, right, that invoice has to be reviewed to make sure that the services were received, the shipment was received and yes, it agrees to the P O and oh, by the way, here's the P O number it agrees to. If it's a little over, the director and/or cabinet member will sign off on that and understand why. That's part of a purchase order, uh, a proper purchase order system process.
So just in terms of the process, that's the thing that jumped out to me. I don't think it's probably very big, but...
Yeah.
Something we'd probably want to understand. Um, that's really the only comment I had.
Yeah, and, and I can see food service being one of those areas because it, what you put the order in and, and you may need more or something else is if necessary. So I can see where that kind of discrepancy could exist in that particular area. But if you're ordering boxes of crayons and you order 32 of them, you should be getting the 32 items that you've got and that should be scrutinized accordingly. Is it different, different level scrutiny, I guess, or, or allowance or tolerance or, or discrepancy? Yeah, I get it. But it's, it is a good question.
Yeah, and I, again, I don't have any issue with the dispersments not being approved. I just think we need to understand how that will be handled and maybe as a board, we decide a certain amount is allowed.
Yeah. Yeah, is the board asking for any more information on that front? I mean, I could pull together a memo on that if you'd like or?
I'm curious, you know, I am curious.
I don't know how big of an issue it is or small.
Right, yeah, I would have to sit with my payable team, sit with my directors and really just really understand how many, how often that happens, you know? My payable team would know right away.
And, and just for example, right, if it's the shipping, one thing I've discovered in my life is that some people want things shipped nice and slow because they don't need it right away. There are some people who want it shipped overnight every time, they don't care what the cost is. So if that's not covered on the P O, maybe you'll discover, you know, someone might always want it overnight and maybe that should be looked at. Because I, I know Dr. Merkendel likes to have things shipped every day. If you want to there by 10 a.m.
Yeah.
I think that the shipping, well, at least in the past, when, when I noticed being a building principal, the, um, part that was often forgotten was the shipping part. They were putting all the items in, even calculating the tax component. And so we would often have to just push it back and say, hey, we need this part of that. So this could just be a good review of the process with things like that. If it's shipping, if it's something else, um, you are, are, if I have some idea of Merkendel, what those would be, and then that could help us come up with what is the percentage threshold or something like that.
And a bigger question regarding the dispersments, but I didn't realize the back history on that, so I don't have a problem with dispersments just being a report and not something that needs approval, like you said, if it's already been approved, it's nice to see, but not necessarily a need to approve again.
Only if we were monitoring cash flow, which I don't think we have an issue here. So, good matter.
We can still get Mr. Krady's way in, but that's too rough. If anybody else on the board wants to weigh in, you're more than welcome to that as well.
So currently are you making the recommendation, um, to put these on as an action item then for the next board meeting or do you want to move it towards consent? Because I think that would be the next step.
I am fine with moving it to consent and the dispersments. I don't think they necessarily have to be on the consent agenda.
I don't think we need to approve that.
No, no, that's what I was, I was wanting to make sure.
Understanding how the process works, right?
Yeah.
So just clarifying, uh, Mr. Elmeyer, are we going to, uh, at the committee, the whole, will still share the dispersment file, right, as information and then the other two would be moved forward for consent?
Correct. We'll bring it forward under a fiscal report. And I'll provide more information.
And what we just, and specific to tonight, you're fine with the two actionable items, the first orders and the impressed checks moving forward then. Is that what you need, Mr. Elmeyer?
Yeah. Thank you.
I heard that.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. So just to, for my own brain, so it works for a minute. The dispersment's all, this month, we've got a little over, a little over, over 10 million. That $10 million total is comprised of impressed checks report, purchase order report and supplemental purchase order. Those, in, in theory, those, the totals of those three reports would total this $10 million or are we off on the dates, like it's a, it's a cutoff date?
No, right. So the, the impressed report and the payable reports and the... No, right, so the impressed report and the payable reports and the PO reports you're looking at now would not total up last month's dispersment report, right? So it's a time, there'll be some small timing differences here and there. But everything on the dispersment report has been dispersed because the board has approved it, number one, via the impressed, and/or previously approved it via PO or supplemental PO.
Okay, okay.
So it's not like you could mix and match their reports to see if they total, because it's different timings of different reports.
Yeah, and even in some cases, some checks are mailed, get lost in the mail, and then you've got to reissue a check and cancel a check.
And that could be on a dispersment report, and we would do that anyway because we avoid reissue.
So that's why the numbers don't necessarily.
Help me, you know, talk me through it, work with, you know, help my brain work. Thank you.
All right, last call, any questions on payables? All right, moving ahead, revenue contracts. Rohmeyer, one more time.
Nothing, nothing else then on the revenue contracts?
Any questions about the revenue contracts? Any objections moving it forward then? Right, no objections, we'll keep that moving ahead. Item H, HR Committee, Mr. Beck.
All right, we've got a few things under the HR Committee. I will send it over to Dr. Zare.
Good evening. The first update I had, just real quick, Mr. Beck, you had a question about a number of students being bused and the number of routes that we have out there. Approximately 6,500 students have a bus service in the district, and we run 131 routes right now, so it's showing the last 15.
Just to clarify for everybody, every student has access to the bus, so we would bus all of our students. However, the number you just gave utilized the bus, they checked out, we asked them for routing purposes to mark whether they need it in the morning, the afternoon, or not at all. And then that does not preclude them, if their situation changes, to be able to have that. So every student in our district qualifies for busing because of our campus approach. However, that's how we utilize that, so.
Thank you, for sure.
And then the next memo, we have a class size update for our averages. As we get to the school year here, it's another first time we've shared this with the board, but wanted to give you an overview of what the class sizes look, what they look like across the district. And so in that chart there, we can go over, it's very high level here. But we can go over that just a little bit here as we look at the different levels. ECC across the board, about 12 per class. As we get into the K5, you can see the averages there. I wanted to speak a little bit to the sections, though. You can see the sections there in parentheses that we've had over the years, and we're down to 145 this year. We were at our highest point in the year 1718, I didn't go back that far, but we had 171 sections. So to give you an idea, we're down 26 elementary sections since 201718. That's how we, we've got 24 sections this year. So with the enrollment going down over the past few years, we have adjusted accordingly in terms of the number of sections that we are offering across the district. So we had that enrollment study that we went over here a month or so ago. So you can see that that has been reflected as the enrollment has dropped. As we take a look at the two middle schools here, if you have in parentheses, there's a number of teams. Usually that's how the buildings are identified, but when you come up with this number, you actually look at the number of core teachers on the team, which is five. So when you start dividing that across, you take the total number, to give you an average across the whole building, you take the total number of students and divide that by the total number of core teachers. And you can see Marlowe there, across the board, it's pretty consistent. They've been right around 1,200, I think we're at 1,199 today. So they've been right around 1,200 the last couple of years to keep that average at 26. Obviously, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade do not have the exact number of enrollments, so you'll see the class size be a little bit larger depending on the enrollment per class. And then, and you take a look at Heidemann there, well, go back to Marlowe real quick. They used to have 12 teams, if you went back about 10 years ago. We did make a reduction in force of 15 teachers from that building one year because the enrollment had continued to drop, and we were projecting class sizes to be in the teams if we did not do so. So we made that move back in, probably 1920, where we made that move. Heidemann, they have 15, you can't add any teams right now with the setup that we have. They don't have the room for that. And you can see that the two buildings have kind of flip-flopped there. When I first started doing the class size committee, Heidemann was actually, if we went back further, much higher, probably in the 30s, they were full. And we can see as the enrollments declined, they've come down to a much more comfortable number at the middle schools. At the high school, this one was kind of tough to do because you have a lot of outliers with the high school when you get electives in there. So when I got that data from the high school, I wanted to give an overall view of what the average class size might look like. And then, like I said, it's tough to do because if you roll PE in there, PE classes can be 45. You have some of your electives that are a little bit smaller that we still do offer. So at the high school, there's a general class size. And then what I did is I broke it down by some of the core sections there, and then PE and health and drivers that, you see science runs a little bit lower. That's because of the number of lab tables in the spaces in those science rooms. And we have contract language with HEA that we don't go over the number of spaces that are in the science room. Some pretty good numbers as you look across the high school there. Do we have classes of 32? Absolutely. Do we have classes, you know, that might add 22, 23? Absolutely. As you get into the electives, in order to provide the electives for the students, we may have to combine some classes. We see that a lot of time in arts, where you may have a specialized art class that meets at the same time with another class, too. So the high school has a lot of offerings. When you go through the spreadsheet, very interesting to look at, to see the different things that we offer out there. Obviously, all the way from the required classes to small engines. We actually added another small engine section this year because of the student interest that we had going on. So that's just a quick overview of class size across the district as we enter into the school year.
Dr. Zare, can you just clarify for me? Are the high school departments, are those all courses that are in that department, or just the required courses?
Yeah, I did all courses, so if you have, it, again, interesting because some of the projects lead the way, it was falling into science, some of it was falling out of the CTE. So I did my best to capture all the courses there. PE got a little bit interesting because we have an outlier with like some online PE that's a little bit lower. But I tried to capture all of those, and if we had some one-offs that were really skewing the numbers, I eliminated those.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from anybody on the board?
I just, equipment, Dr. Zare, it was very helpful. We, is this data available with other neighboring districts, too, so we can have a comparison of how we stand?
I would have to ask nicely. We might be able to get that from a couple of districts. But let me see if, they would have to put something together for us, but I can maybe get a general idea. I've got a couple of districts in mind that maybe I can reach out to, if you give me a little bit on that. If you take a look and see what, that'd be great, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
So kind of on that point, and we've talked about this a little bit, on the contract side with HEA, we are generally the same or better than all the districts around with our class size language. And all of these, it looks like in general, we are well below even our contract language.
Yeah, so just to give you the contract language, the numbers we strive for. Kindergarten, 23, well below there. First through, first and second grade is a 24, and third through fifth is a 27.
Yeah, so we're actually doing, I think, pretty well underneath that, so the classes look like they're in pretty good shape. The one thing I wanted to highlight was the kindergarten, first, and second grade classes, the sizes. Now, we expect that there will be kids added as we go through this. But if you look at those numbers as they get to middle school, and this kind of goes into some of the discussion we had earlier, it almost looks like we would need to drop another pod. So I guess I would ask you to kind of look at, do we need to have the pod? Is there a way to incrementally change the number of teachers? Instead of dropping by five, can you drop by one and still accommodate things?
So without shaking the middle school here live on YouTube tonight, there's, yeah, if that dropped, there's different things we could look at. So right now, I'll give you an idea, we've got block literacy, right? We've got the two blocks of literacy, so they've got the five cores with two of those classes being literacy at the middle school. You could go to a four-person team. You could extend, you know, the time of all the periods. I mean, the math, you could add nine or 10 minutes to all of those sections. You could have both, like in many other middle school slash junior high settings, you could end up teaching literacy and social studies, or math and science. Very unique and what's attractive, much working in our middle schools. When you're a literacy teacher, your focus is literacy, social studies, math, science, so on. Obviously, you do have some different levels that you teach, but with that true middle school concept, you're able to do that. But if the enrollment would call for it, there's something you could do to the middle school schedule, you could go to a junior high concept, too, which we have some neighboring districts that do that. So there are some different things you can definitely look at.
Yeah, it's definitely a few years away, and you'd have to look at the numbers.
Here comes alumni.
Well, I think that we're in the midst of a middle school scheduling committee and structure there. And while that's not talking about teaming, there are things I would highly recommend us not to go to a true junior high. The middle school is talking about really having teams of people work around their students. And so it's a smaller school than a school kind of approach. But as Dr. Zare said, there are models out there where there's three teachers on a team, there's five, there, you know, all those six. So this is a place that we can start having those conversations. To do it right before it's necessary would be a nightmare because you're then looking at certifications and really up people and a lot of people. We've got time, but we've got to start those conversations.
Yeah, I was just pointing out, our team is planning on coming together again this year. As I did in update today, that we did not make a major change, we're a bit of a full schedule, but some of this was a part of our conversation for sure. Trying to think through how we best meet our students needs, as Ms. Rohmeyer said, knowing developmentally what an adolescent really needs to help themselves grow as they're growing as a learner and a person. But then also being able to make sure that we're doing the right thing in regards to our members and how we're playing our.
And I don't want to stir up YouTube, but on one level, if this does change and it drops a little bit, you almost have to look at boundaries, or dare I say, even combining the two middle schools into one.
You can say that.
I can say that, it's not what I want to do, but it is something that you could look at as you go through this. So, no, this is great data, I appreciate it.
Yeah, other thing I did when I had Dr. Zare, we have been talking also about, at the high school level especially, there's some of those courses that are specialized courses. So we've been having conversations about how often do you run those? What are some of those, are there certain rotations that we might need to follow in order to say, within your four-year time span, you will have access to, but we're not going to offer it every year? And so we're starting those conversations because, as Dr. Zare said, he did pool the ones that are the most, the core classes. But some of those specialty classes, which we're proud of, and we're very excited to offer our students, do have less students than them, and so we're starting to have those conversations as well.
Yeah, we've got some great offerings. When I get that data and sort through and take a look at it, I'm very interested to see what kids are interested in and what they flock to in terms of electives.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to the crossing guard.
We're going to, we'll go to page two real quick. I had a request for some special education historical data, so that make it to this memo. We've been updating it, so. So just some historical data here, I'm glad that my data matched up with Ms. Gill's presentation. We're tapping really well. So I went back to 2122, just to give everyone an idea of what the IETs look like as we get ready to roll in. I've learned something new, December 1st child count. So for 2526, when they do the child count, I'll be able to add another line to this. Right now, we're sitting at 1,170 IETs according to our system the other day. So this just gives you a general idea, you know, our enrollment has been decreasing. You'll see that the IETs have been increasing.
No, that's really good data, thank you for putting that together. Any other questions for Dr. Zare about that? All right, now, would you like to walk us through the crossing guard agreement?
Yeah, so the crossing guard information here, if you have ever driven through Halagus and Scott out in front of Marlowe in the morning, you'll see Mr. Bodisman out there. Bodisman helps get kids across safely, and we've got traffic there in the morning and afternoon, very significant. That flashing light didn't, used to be there back in the day. It was this guy and my aunt, didn't even have a stop sign. I don't think Mr. Dean was here yet, they'll tell him about that. But we just went out, we stopped traffic, and we got kids across, we did what we had to do. So it's evolved over time. So what we've been looking for out there is more training essentially. And we've worked with Huntley, this has taken over a year to get this put together. So Mr. Dean worked with the village and essentially what they're going to provide for us. We're still employing the person, we'll still be hiring the person, but they're going to give them training on how to do the crossing correctly. But also, in addition to that, there's a little bit of traffic direction that would go in that training also, so we can properly manage all of that out there. There's a lot going on at that intersection in the morning, and if both would just be super patient, it would be a lot better. But then you add the buses to that, too. There's a lot to watch as you come to that intersection in the morning. So this is just another layer of safety that we're getting added. And obviously, in-house here, we don't have that training ability. So partnering with the village was our best way to go on.
Any questions on this? All right, Mr. Beck, any reason not to move it forward?
No.
Okay, we'll move that forward. Thank you, Dr. Zare, and we'll move on to number nine, Mr. Troy.
All right, building and ground. Most of you have been waiting for Mr. Link.
All night. Thank you, Mr. Troy, I have a few updates for the board. Giving solar project is in the pre-commissioning stages, the completion dates have not changed from the last update. The natural gas supply update, on August 13th, we were presented with another opportunity to lock in an additional 25% of NYMEX fixed gas at $0.41 per therm. This will give us a total of 50% now locked in for NYMEX at that price, which is outstanding. Those prices haven't been that low for a while. That is good for three years, starting September of 2026. New January gator for the ONM department, we traded in our 13-year-old Kubota that had no more floorboard. Last time I saw someone driving, I thought it was Fred Flintstone, I got his feet on the ground. So those due for a change in equipment there. And finally, FMX worker report, this might be a record. For August, we received over 1,100 workers of ONM department with a completion, average resolution time 3.3 days for the month of August, which is outstanding as well for the team, they've done a great job. Any questions on those updates?
Nothing for me, but from a comment standpoint on the Kubota.
Yes.
Good that we have a piece of equipment in snow removal season that has the floorboard on it.
Absolutely, right. It comes in handy, for sure.
Yeah, in the winter time, good for you. All right, any questions from the committee on this or the board in general? Thank you for that update. Moving ahead, item 10, policy legislation.
Probably should have removed that because I don't think we have anything.
No, I have to address from Mr. Rohmeyer, but I can take it offline.
Will you want to wrap that?
No, that's fine, I'll just take it offline and add. So then, moving ahead, item 12. Before jumping in on the six-day enrollment, for those board members that have provided some response and guidance on how to proceed forward with the student board member interviews, thank you for doing that. If you haven't done that, please skip that to me so we can formulate process going forward with that. Give us some time. Item 12, that one six-day enrollment.
So this is an annual report here. As outlined in there, we wanted to make sure that we were doing the class size information. The information that Dr. Zare provided is more accurate based on our certified teachers in the core classrooms. If you look at the six-day, with this is all students in the grade level, so if they are in one of our self-contained programs. they are in one of our self-contained programs, um, third or, as Mrs. Gill outlined, um, the majority of that day, they are in a separate class, so, um, they may push in, um, from time to time, but, um, that kind of skews our data a little bit. But, uh, interesting, um, our six-day enrollment count was, um, 8219. I did just pull while we were chatting and we are at, as of today, 8264. So 8264 is our number by 8219, uh, with our six-day enrollment. Um, there's the historical data, uh, so as we know, we're on a decline. Um, and looking at that, uh, where we were at the end of the last school year on the last day was 8,466. Um, the majority, the largest, uh, enrollment increase is because of our E C C. We gradually, um, bring students in as they're entering three. And so it starts smaller and that, uh, does typically double in size, uh, there. So we will know, uh, see a notable increase most likely in our E C C. Uh, but again, those numbers are a couple hundred off from our last day to where we are currently today. Um, and then there is that chart. Um, I do know that there's been a couple different numbers that have been thrown out about, uh, our, our students who are, um, in private facility. Uh, so 33 on here because there were a few whose actual first day started after Labor Day, so that doesn't count in here. Our actual number of students in, um, private facilities as of today is 36. So, uh, any questions on our six-day enrollment? The chart that was, um, outlined there, probably most of that was covered with Dr. There.
I just had a question about E C C. Is there any form of waiting list or is every student who's assessed and qualifies accepted?
So if they, if they qualify, um, and have an I E P, we need to have space for them. And so there have been some years, and it's been a number of, uh, number of years where maybe we may have to add a class if, um, we have reached capacity. However, um, and it's kind of how the grant and the program is supposed to be, is that there is a waitlist. Um, we have not had to do that very often. Um, our numbers are in our classrooms starting a little bit larger this year, uh, so there is a high likelihood that we would have a waitlist for, uh, students who would qualify as at-risk, but if they do have an I E P, we do need to service them.
Okay, so I'm asking too, because if we're, our enrollment is down and there's open spaces within other schools, is there an opportunity to expand E C C for students who couldn't be served solely for the sake of their not being in space?
I think that, um, even at the E C C, if we needed to add a classroom for our students, uh, there, there are a variety of different, um, there's the blended, there's self-contained and all of that. We would have space for a little bit more there. Um, if we wanted to look at expanding the number of students that would be, we would take in, um, for at-risk or some districts do tuition in, um, so that if they would be just like a local preschool where they would, um, be paying monthly tuition for that. Um, that is something that we could look into. Um, there is a considerable cost where you're looking at staffing for all of that. So, um, right now, we'd be able to, um, we know with staff over there, if we needed to make an increase mid-year, um, we could do so with staff that can, space available. Uh, but that is something that they review every year, the type of, of classroom setting and what, uh, teachers are teaching, um, and they do that in the spring, uh, they look very closely, um, with, uh, Mrs. Gill on looking at what are the needs of the students. Uh, the other piece that helps us is, um, that there is a report that, uh, talks about, um, the students who are birthed to free. Um, so we know who is kind of on the horizon, who is already receiving services that we know we would need to have a space for. And so that is, um, provided to us on an annual basis and, uh, that helps for our child life.
Early intervention?
Yep. Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, it keeps cutting you off.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Um, this memo references, um, a document that's broken down by building and grade level that I don't see linked here. Can we get that link?
It should be. It was in there a minute ago.
There were two documents.
Yes, there's two documents.
Oh, my apologies.
Oh, that's okay. I was like, it was just there.
Oh, thank you.
No problem. And again, the numbers will be slightly different than what Dr. There put in there. We wanted to make sure his were accurate based on our classroom teachers and the students in there. Um, this equates for, counts for all of our students, um, at that grade level, so it doesn't differentiate if, uh, they are in, um, a, one of our self-contained programs.
Thank you.
Real quick, I just had a quick question. I'm going to go back with, can you, uh, restate what you said about the grant? Does the, does the grant require us to have a waiting list?
No, no, no. The grant, it, it says in there that, um, it doesn't require you to, but, um, it, the way it is developed is that, that most of the districts do have a waiting list and there are, I mean, the grant of when you're looking for preschool for all, um, that is, it's kind of the way it's set up. We've, um, very rarely had to have a waiting list for long-term, um, components there, just because of the, the space and the, the classroom setting. Um, we are able to, um, what is our average number, 12, in that class? So we, you know, we can, we can go higher, um, because of the professionals and all of that in there. So, no, a lot, it, it allows for that waiting list and, like I said, a lot of our neighboring districts do have waiting lists, um, when they're looking at their, their early childhood programs.
Okay, and so in order to be in E C C, you don't have to have an I E P. You can be an at-risk student.
Correct. Still screened and there's qualifiers that.
But if you have an I E P, if, if some, if somehow a child has an I E P from before they're three years old, they would automatically have to come in to E C C, but then we have other individuals that are three years old that are more at-risk.
So if you look at, um, the screenings, um, so parents can sign up, um, and many parents are looking at getting on one of our screening dates right around their birthday. Uh, some of the students come into us from early intervention, others, um, are screened and maybe, uh, don't qualify. Some qualify by our criteria for as at-risk, so they don't necessarily have an I E P. Some of our students are screened and then go into a full, um, evaluation and, um, are provided with an I E P. Some students are speech only, um, and maybe, um, do you think kind of more of the outpatient, if you will, they come in just for speech services? Others are, are there, um, and just receive speech, um, only, but are students, um, you know, for the full session. Um, and so there are a variety of different ways that a student can qualify. But there are, are, um, criteria and there are points given, um, through the screenings, um, that would qualify them for at-risk. And, um, some years, we have more students that are at-risk than I E P and other years, if you looked at Dr. There's, there was one year that, uh, it just seemed like it was anomaly of, oh, there was definitely more students that had an I E P than in previous years, uh, but that, uh, when we did, did a little digging, it was for speech only, um, that increased that number.
Okay.
They have a fantastic E C C program.
Yeah, we do. And, and so because of that, and I know I've had conversations with Mr. Bobby about the just like a, you know, like brainstorm, like just not in general conversation, but w- would it serve the district better in the long run to open up and have more opportunities for students to come in at the E C C level, to get a jumpstart on some of these things so that maybe we wouldn't then, kids could graduate out of their I E P if, if we give them that, that head start kind of, or addressing some of these things beforehand and be more proactive as opposed to reactive? I don't know.
Yeah, well, I, I think that, um, it's hard to tell for each student's a little bit different. I think one of the other things that, um, our E C C is able to do, um, and it, it depends on the year, but, um, they have gone out and worked with a lot of our local preschools, giving, um, uh, strategies and ideas of things that we're doing that they can do in that classroom. Maybe if there is a student who has, um, five motor skills, um, but all other, uh, areas, um, you know, parent wants to have them remain in their, their local preschool, um, and then they're giving them tips on things that they can do to enhance that skill set for the students. So there is a lot of community partnership that our E C C does with our local preschools and our daycares. We just, um, did a review, um, there and so in looking at that, um, that wasn't something that came out, that was, um, that we needed to expand, um, the number of, um, sections, uh, and looking, and looking at that. And we can, we can highlight and, and do a whole presentation, um, around E C C and you can kind of talk about that program review and, and some of those recommendations that came forward, um, under one of our things in a future month.
Yeah, I remember there was a nice presentation during, you know, our strategic 2030 planning, we, we, there was, there was great conversation, uh, in there, but yeah, something, yeah, more, I know we could do that.
Yeah, and I think, I think if I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Moreno, is in that curriculum, uh, that we had, where there was this various presentations by the different departments, is one topic of conversation came up is if there is a waiting list for kids, uh, that could, that are at-risk, that could fund it from, from E C C services, then is there, is there data that should suggest that those students who go to E C C at our district more successful in kindergarten because of the uptick in behaviors in kindergarten? Is there a potential long game strategy of the mid, more students D C C so that way there's more successful kindergartners? I think that came up, if that's where you were going at.
Yes. Right, and I think if today don't have the answer to the numbers, the number of kids on a waiting list in the past has been slim to none and it wouldn't have been for the whole year. So I don't want, um, the perception out there that we have always had this waiting list and I can't get in and we should be able to figure out a way. Um, we've been able to service our students. It's that we know that our numbers are, the classes are starting a little bit more full, maybe they've been screened already, uh, but there is that possibility that we potentially could have a waitlist. Um, and again, the grant allows for it, doesn't encourage it, but it does allow for that piece. So we'll get, we'll have more information and if we have a large waitlist, there may be a recommendation that would come from Dr. Powell's to say, hey, we could really use a morning session or something like that. We would absolutely talk about that as a team and probably bring something forward to the board.
Yeah, and ensuring that the community knows that E C C is, is available. Some families don't, really don't even know about E C C, they're just unaware of it. So it is do, yeah.
I, I do think, um, more families that it's because of its reputation, um, and it is five days a week where a lot of the other local preschools are not five days a week. Um, a lot of people are aware, how do I get my student in? And some don't qualify and then others do. Um, I think that one of the things that's going to be interesting to see is that, um, we have data and we are, um, seeing a decline in enrollment in our kindergarten level for the first time and we potentially will see that. If there's no kindergartners out there, there's going to be fewer early childhood children as well. So we may see a decline in the number of students down the line, um, just because they just might not be there. Um, and so that would let me know that we, we would have more room to not have to, um, entertain a waitlist. So I'm hopeful that we don't, but we, we know that the classes are just starting more full this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we'll jump right on into the strategic planning measures and, um, I will start with one part while Dr. McCrystal will be pulling up some information on a dashboard. And so it was one of the things that we talked about as, um, we were developing, um, monthly 2030, that, uh, there would be, um, a distinction or a difference between some of our K P I's or short-term goals that we were bringing forward and then other things that just should be continuous improvement measures. We continuously want to improve academics. We may have the retention rate, um, it might be the bond rating, it's all the different components that just because they are not a K P I, doesn't mean we are not striving for and moving for those. And so there's, uh, two components that we'll be presenting tonight. Um, the first is the dashboard and it's divided into various areas and I am going to ask Dr. McCrystal in just a moment to take it away here and describe those pieces, but I do want to highlight, there are 53 indicators, right? It doesn't mean we have 53 different projects going on. These are 53 things that came out of the strategic plan, um, guiding team that could be things or should be things that are on there that parents, community members may want to know, or there are, they are things that we are continually striving for. Out of the 53, we've identified 14 of them on here that we would say there's a goal to continual, to increase or decrease, and we're talking attendance, uh, chronic absenteeism. So there may be a component in there that Dr. McCrystal will highlight where there is a goal that, um, again, is going to be utilized for when we come up with our measures at the end of the year and our, our percent met. Part of that will come from here, 14 of those items. Um, and again, those will be the pieces that they go and say, what, there's not a K P I for? Yes, continually striving for that. After she's done with that, I'll talk about some of the larger, um, projects, short-term goals that we will have for this year that will continue to help us meet, um, uh, monthly 2030 and have an impact on these indicators that are on the dashboard. And we hope to make this, after this discussion live tonight, so it's out there on our website.
All right, so, um, this, as Ms. Lombard shared during her strategic plan conversations, uh, what came up were from the community were some areas that we wanted to have for our continuous improvement ones. And so this is actually a, um, dashboard that we're able to create on Ekra. Uh, Ekra is our group that we have partnered with for many, many, many years, um, in regards to some data, um, warehouse support as well as they help set up projections for growth that we have used to update if we've met our, um, strategic plan goals in the past. And so, uh, through their site, no extra costs, there is a way that we can create this dashboard, so we wanted to make sure we leveraged that tool, which is a great, um, use of this tool that we were not leveraging before. So on here, there are, um, a couple of areas. The first one was academic excellence, was that first category, and you'll see we put our proficiency growth standards in here and we put gold under these. So we maintain that idea that we want to grow three to five percent of our students proficient on their, um, I A R and, um, S A T assessors. The reason it says, um, S A T on here right now is because, um, we are using 23, 24 data because it's embargo 24, 25, and we'll be updating this the second we can and we will re, we'll make sure it's all accurate, but technically what's in here is S A T and I A R data. So, um, we would go ahead and maintain that there's a goal in some of these areas, including our proficiency and our growth goals because we just want to do that. We would have a goal here in our science area as well. Um, and we were able to include some other indicators such as kindergarten readiness, which is just kind of a snapshot of what percentage of kids are currently developmentally ready when they come in in kindergarten. Um, our high school graduation rate, this is going to have a goal as well. Um, I was just trying to get one more piece of data to put the actual goal in there, so I give a good, I don't want to just throw random number out there, so that will be ready, um, really soon. And then, um, we have, you know, just other categories here which are all coming from our, um, school report card. That's where most of this is coming from, from the state of Illinois and we'd be able to watch that. What's nice is on some of these, um, when you click them, it says view data up here. Um, when you click it, see how fast my Wi-Fi is right now, um, it does show you three years of time and so we'll be able to continue to add to this, um, moving forward so we can start to track, um, even just another way to see where we're performing. Um, it's our aggregate compared to the state, so the district compared to the state, um, but it's nice to be able to kind of, to see that over time. Um, we would also, we went ahead and put some information in here about just dual credit, um, advanced placement, um, our college enrollment, the number of kids in C L by literacy, um, you'll see the number of just C T E courses, the number of students that enrolled in our C T E courses based off of 24, 25 data. Um, and so you'll see in parentheses actually different years because some of it is current years, so between my will be what we're currently doing and others are prior years just because of that embargo data. Um, and we were able to put our middle school enrollment, high school courses for last year, 573 students, that is not, we're sorry, that's not unique students, it's the number of courses. So I might have taken three different high school classes and I counted three times that number. Um, I did not, but that's what that would be. Then down here with our district demographics, and so we were able to pull this information straight from our, um, report card as well. Um, it's, and again, any of these little view data ones, we're able to open up and see kind of the change over time. Um, and so some of them are little smaller changes just because of just the number, the percentage of students that we have, but you can see E L is on here, um, as well. Um, we wanted to add our number of languages spoken because that's something very unique at Huntley, is our, use the number of languages we have in our community and we're proud of that and want to make sure that, um, we see that on there. And we were able to work with Dr. There to put just our average class sizes on here as well because that came from our families, um, as in, then did some enrollment over at light. Uh, down here is some financial information, you'll see. You'll see we worked with Mr. Altmeier, they were finalizing their final audit and so we will update this information in order to make sure it's accurate, but we wanted to be able to put this information out for the public to be able to see very quickly. And then with staffing, we were able to add some information in here, our teacher retention data, which will have a goal right here attached to it as well. We want to maintain our teachers. We, we love and support them, so we want to make sure they stay here. And then that would be the bottom of that dashboard. There was a communications part that is not showing right this second, but I need to figure out why that little part right here, this bar is not showing right here. So I will figure it out.
The pieces on there, when you printed it out, they were social media engagement clicks and all of those kinds of website visits, silver pass, newsletter analytics and all of those things.
Yes, thank you.
So the pieces that are on there. Dr. McCrystal, you kind of highlighted the academic areas that would be part of the goals in our overall percentage. Chronic absenteeism would remain a goal to, to continue to decrease by three to five percent. From there, in the financial information, it would, three areas that would want to be linked to that would be our financial profile for bond rating and our balance budget. Are we operating within a balance budget? The teacher retention and then the components that Dr. McCrystal highlighted for the academic area. So again, 14 of those indicators have goals tied to them for the end of the year reporting. Any questions on the dashboard? Want to absorb?
Yes. And it's not so much a question, it's a comment. Can we add some color to this? One of the things that I saw when you scroll by, for example, is our rating for our financial status and it said 3.8. But 3.8 is a number that's random? No, no, I understand how it's created, but when somebody picks this up or takes a look at this, what does 3.8 mean? 3.8 out of five, 3.8 out of 10, 3.8 out of 100? It doesn't give a little bit of depth to the number to actually provide additional levels of information. That's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, we're limited some work with characters on what you can put on a literal dashboard. We can work with Mr. Altmeier to see if there's even a way to maybe get a new button right here that we can even open up a better explanation and reword that one.
That's just one example, but there's probably others there as you scroll by where we could have that little depth of information.
What does the double A bond rating mean?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Ferro, would you, such as, are you thinking like red, yellow, green?
No, it's not even that. It's just like, like the easy example for me is the 3.8 because I know that that scale is a five point scale. However, not everybody knows it's a five point scale.
Yeah. Just to give more information and context around what does that mean?
Correct.
I'm wondering, there's got to be a way that we can pop out. These are in there, we built this out based on the score report card data, so when we're tracking about attendance, enrollment, we could have live data that goes into there and is regularly updated so it's not two years in, three years.
Well, I think this is very exciting and transparent and I love the idea that it's going to be on the website so that at any given moment, community can reach, reach out, look at the data, doesn't have to necessarily do FOIA requests on, on everything that's presented here. It's just easy, it's your tips, so, well done.
Any other questions or comments on the dashboard or continuous improvement component before we get into the short-term goals?
I have two questions. One, where might it live on the website? Like is there a button that's, you know, or something noticeable? And then the second one, I know we talked about this during the strategic plan process, is there a way to call out certain pride points, for example? You know, things that we're really excited about, things that we want to celebrate and make those prominent. You know, there's a lot of data and so I think just to make it more community friendly, maybe calling out a couple of things that either we're working on or that we're just very proud of.
On this dashboard built through Ekra, no. However, we can pull those out and create a separate dashboard similar to how we had done for just the attendance component of that. So yes, and I believe this is living on the strategic plan page of the website.
Yes, that is correct. The landing page of the strategic plan, yeah. Yeah, so we could, Ms. Lombard, I believe we could also add some of those on that main page of the website. We could say, here's a couple of the areas that we are wanting to highlight and then click here to learn more. So we could do a little, make sure we go through those for sure. I think that'd be the pride point.
Any other questions or comments? And as you marinate, we will be bringing it back for voting later, so if there are things that do pop up, please feel free to reach out to any one of us. It could be things that we continue to, again, give context around or why is this missing? Kind of a piece and we can look at it. Okay, so looking at some of the short-term goals, again, we can't do everything all at once. So breaking this apart, looking at the five priority areas, we as a team worked together and then worked with our larger leadership team to identify these as performance indicators for this year or short-term goals. By the end of 2526 school year, school leadership teams will demonstrate increased alignment in instructional leadership as measured by establishing and piloting walkthrough look force connected to high-quality instructional practices. So instructional rounds, having rubrics or what are we specifically looking for in literacy and math that show high-quality instruction that's going to have an impact on that student achievement piece of that. Those rubrics were developed and not only will those be building administrators who are walking around doing those walkthroughs and we call them instructional rounds, but our district administrators participating in those as well. That touching on both the teaching and learning and the student success priorities. By the end of the school year, we will have designed a multi-year framework connected to the portrait of the learner to provide all students with a pathway that ensures readiness for post-secondary education careers and/or training, employment and/or life skills in an ever-evolving global society. That's going to be a real big endeavor this year as we're pulling through that framework, making sure that we are bringing that to life, but then providing our staff with the right tools to be able to make that happen in the classroom. So that is future readiness and student success. The team will demonstrate a differentiated professional learning plan focused on student engagement with a portrait of the learner again, learning environment informed by the UDL principles to ensure instructional practices support the success of all students. Our LNI team is working very consistently for all of our learners, whether we are looking at our self-contained classrooms, our gen ed classrooms, ensuring that those instructional practices support all of our students. You've heard about probably a little bit last year, some of the, the UDL and those principles and we will be focusing a lot of work and discussion that we'll bring forward to you on that component. And so again, that ties into our student success, teaching and learning, which will should be increasing when we're looking at the percentage of our students meeting and exceeding the standards because they're having the exposure to the standards at their grade level. We'll increase our family engagement by hosting a minimum of four district-level events designed to help families support their children's learning at home. Attendance post-event feedback will be collected and data will be used to inform future planning events. We have a lot of events that happen at the building level. We have great reading in math night, but one of the things that we are hearing from our families is, I need to know what can I do to support my students with math? What exactly are we doing in class? Kind of answer learning for them so that they be able to take that back. So again, while we say a minimum before, we hope we're doing more than that. Building a library, we may video some of these so that families who cannot come in have that. But again, it's, we want our parents to be actively engaged and we are hearing from them that sometimes they don't have the tools to be able to, we learned with different curriculum, where you're learning with different terminology and what can we do to support them? And but that component of the post-event feedback is going to be extremely important so that we are hearing them and being able to provide those pieces. And then the attendance, right? We see, any of us, see a decline in the number of people who are coming to back to school night at the high school, all right? Is there a different way that we can provide parents that same information? If that format or that time of year doesn't work, what can we do? And so that'll be a lot of the work that Mrs. Barr will kind of head up and lead with our parent-family liaison. And then, so that is our community engagement and then that student success component. By the end of the year, we'll implement and evaluate at least one structured reoccurring two-way communication model for each stakeholder group. So something with staff, with students, when we say community members, that includes our families, with 80% participants reporting that they felt heard and believed, not just having it, but they are feeling that they're heard and believe that their feedback is considered in that decision-making process, right? We can offer an opportunity to have a vision and voice and then do nothing with that information. That's just checking off a box. So community engagement, teaching and learning, and student success. Two here for fiscal stewardship. We, we are very proud with the work that we have done in identifying and implementing those operational efficiencies. That could be a continuous improvement. They think it is one of those that we still want to have in the forefront of being able to continue to identify those. How do those impact the strategic plan and the vision that we have and how do we utilize that information? So again, that will be carrying forward. And then the last one I kind of highlighted a little bit previously, but to implement processes, procedures and a system for internal consistency and transparency around budgeting and resource allocation between buildings and departments, right? We've talked a lot in these last few meetings that as our revenues are coming in, we have to change the way that we are allocating our resources, making sure that they're going to the right priorities that we as a department, district have identified. We talked a little bit about, yep, it makes sense that, right? We, a lot of times we budget those based on a per-student allocation. However, if one building has twice as many than another, but we're looking at a curriculum that they might need, it costs the same amount regardless of how many students are in there. And so are there things that we would have to look at? How are we educating our administrators as they are taking their resource allocation and determining the things that they should be spending that they are timed here? Again, they're not budget experts. Mr. Altmeier and his team are and we're working with them to help educate all of us on that component and how we're taking these dollars, allocating appropriately based on our strategic plan and moving forward. So we want to make sure that we are really rolling that out and looking at how those bets are done in our buildings and our, and our departments moving forward because as we look at that five-year plan, there's work to be done and we need to help the buildings understand that. And again, they're academic experts. They are experts in the field of teaching and learning and so we're working with them on the budget components there. So again, little bit less when you look at the list here, but some really intentional identified short-term goals and projects that we want to make sure that we get done for this year that will have high impact on our student success and our student achievement moving forward. So any questions on that? Anything that you're like, oh, this is burning, last time we talked about some things that that year that were, hey, we like to see this live here. So if there are feedbacks and things that we can bring forward, again, we won't be adopting this and approving this here for a few more weeks. And so any feedback, we will take back to our meetings here and adjust and bring back to that next week.
Well, I think it covers the high points, so everything is on track from everything we discussed in previous meetings. The one thing I want to point out that you mentioned, I thought was really spot on, is the creation of videos for families on how to best work with their, their students. In that world where reading instruction manual is not going to work, but we all go to YouTube now to figure out how to fix anything, so I think having YouTube videos is going to be phenomenal for a family. Hey, here's a quick tip from the math teacher on how to do this math so that way you can help assist your students. That's so exciting.
And that, everyone will tap into those. Some will want to come to in-person, some will, I'll read it here, I'll Google. We just want to be able to provide access. We've talked about this video series for a while and I think it's important. I think it is just another way that we can tap into the busy lives that some of our families have right now. And if I could do a quick, you know, look at something and while the curriculum remains the same of the standards, those will last for quite some time and people can't use them.
Thank you, everybody, for the contributions that you've put into all of this, the reporting and all of this. Much. I don't have anything to add. This was very well done. Thank you.
I just had one piece of feedback. I think the goals are excellent. I'm struggling a little bit with the format of this one-pager.
Me too. Yep, we can continue working on it. It's a lot of information. It's like what you don't do on a PowerPoint slide, but we do need to get it here and we can massage what that looks like on there. My vision didn't quite work out. We wanted to have those on there and tie them, but it is a lot of information to look at. So we'll work on that. Please, I'll take ownership, not the, not the communications department, so we can help.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody? All right, moving ahead. Item 13, public comments, any sheets? I don't see any in the chat. Okay. Item 15, we should have stricken along with 14 because we don't have any public question to come back to. With that, we'll move to item 16, which is adjournment at 8:45 PM. Motion to adjourn in favor, I'm sorry, need a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Beckey in favor of adjournments. Will you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, five votes for, zero against. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good night and good luck.
I'd like a microphone as well.